Good evening and welcome to the Barrington joint meeting of the Barrington Planning Board and Select Board. First, we will start in the far corner and introduce yourself and who you're affiliated with.
Barbara Irvine, Planning and Use Administration Assistant.
Scott Shepard, Planning Board.
Joyce Capiello, Select Board and Ex officio on Planning Board.
Marcus Katkin, Planning Board.
Ron Eller, Planning Board.
Tracy Hardikoff, Select Board.
Steve Whitman, Resilience Planning and Design.
Eric Halverson, RKG Associates.
I'm Mark.
Mark Fugier, Fugier Playing and Development.
John Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Board.
Ernest Scrubling, Town Planner.
Connor McIver, Town Administrator.
Andrew Knapp, Planning Board.
I will turn it over to Connor to make introductions further.
Alexandra Samaco is Select Board Member, joining us virtually.
Excellent.
Yes. Good evening. Keeping my sick germs at home.
Fair enough. Thank you for being here. The Vice Chair of the Select Board can't join us tonight, Jim Sikosha, and another Select Board Member, Danin Manstrek, also couldn't make it tonight. We are recording the meeting so they'll be able to stay in the loop after the meeting. And I think we have all of the Planning Board members, yes? Tess here. Yes, okay. Yeah, well, he's here in spirit, yeah. So this is a progression of a series that we started kind of the beginning of last summer relative to master plan implementation. The Select Board, as part of their strategic planning, decided it was important that we have a joint and collective focus across multiple boards and departments on achieving the goals and vision set out in the master plan and finding opportunities where those need to be updated as a result of the process of trying to implement and achieve this master plan that the community has worked hard on over many years. And so there were two main components of that initiative. The first was addressing the Conservation Subdivision zoning ordinance and regulations. And hey, Bob, so that part was identified as something that we could approach in time for March 2025 Town Meeting, and that was a very successful joint project. We were able to develop some really comprehensive changes to the Conservation Subdivision zoning ordinance, and we're still working on fine tuning the regulations which correspond with those. But that was a success of this endeavor for master plan implementation. So the consultant team that we hired, we advertised the request for qualifications, we hired the consultant team led by Steve, Resilience Planning Design, RKG, and Mark Fugier as part of that, you know, team of consultants to help and bring their experience and expertise to different phases. So kind of in the background, while we were focusing publicly and as a collective group on Conservation Subdivisions, the work was starting on the town center component of the master plan. So we had a lot of, before we brought on the consultant team, you'll remember, we had a lot of spirited conversations about, is the town center vision even possible anymore? What is realistic to achieve? The development that we're seeing is kind of different than what the vision is, says, what we're hearing from developers, is different than what the vision says and what we've heard from residents. So what is really possible? Where, what might we need to change our regulations in order to achieve the vision or some semblance of the vision? And what might we need to update with the vision for the master plan? And so in strategizing with the consultant team, the logical first place to start was with economic analysis of Barrington with a focus on the town center, figure out what we could learn from that process and how that could advise what really is possible in the town center. What of the undeveloped land, what opportunities are there to address the opportunities identified in the economic analysis? And for land that's already developed, what redevelopment potential exists to help achieve this town center vision? So that's going to be the primary focus of tonight. That was work that RKG Associates did. You all should have the kind of final or second to final draft of the economic analysis, the market analysis, and we'll finalize it probably after this meeting, and that will be available for the Planning Board and Select Board and developers and realtors to use to help achieve what we're talking about in the town center. Real quick on future steps, just so you understand the progression, where we are now and then where we're going. So this conversation will develop into conversations with the consultant team about our current set of regulations and ordinances around the town center and where we might need to make adjustments. Part of the process has already been connecting with developers and landowners in the town center area to hear from them. We'll be circling back with them with some of the findings that we have to make sure that everybody is kind of being along with the process. We could have the best vision for the town center possible, but if nobody is willing to make that investment and actually build it, then we end up kind of like we have since 2007, where we have a really good idea, really good plan, but not the investment that we had hoped for. So that will be done. Additionally, the consultant team has been working on and will continue to pull together case studies from kind of around the New England area of communities that have tried to achieve or have achieved a similar vision with a town center and kind of that component of an opportunity for residents to gather and businesses to thrive and things like that. So it's reasonable to expect that this trajectory, by the time we wrap up this component of the project, there will be recommended changes to the zoning to kind of realign with whatever changes this group and engaging with the public and/or developers want to see. So the kind of, I don't say the end goal, but an intermediate goal for this process will likely be zoning changes proposed for March of 2026. And so that's kind of what we're working towards and then implementation beyond there. And so does that, just as far as setting the table and everybody on the same page, any questions about what we've done, where we are, where we're going? Fantastic. So I'll turn it over to Steve, Eric, and Mark to, I'll turn it over to Eric to address the market analysis that him and his team have done. And certainly, if you have questions, I know you've all had a chance to review it, be prepared to bring those so we can focus the discussion on what's important, folks.
Great. Thanks, Connor. Good evening, everyone. As I mentioned, my name is Eric Halverson. I'm a principal with RKG Associates, and we're a part of the team taking a look at the town center. Our role, as Connor mentioned, was to try to understand or get a better understanding of what the market potential could be for the future town center area here in Barrington from the perspective of the types of uses, I think that were identified many years ago. Are those still relevant? To what degree are those still relevant? And how much demand might there actually be for different uses, given that it's been almost 20 years, I guess, since the original 2007 work? So quite a bit of time has passed. We did, I believe, the full report and draft version was sent out to everyone. I'm not gonna go through that entire thing since it's lengthy. Tried to do this in about 20 minutes, just to kind of hit the highlights and try to illustrate to you all some of the positive aspects of the work that we did that we think are great for Barrington. Heard you have the slides. Okay, great. Okay, next one. Okay, so just really quick for context setting. So we looked at Barrington itself, but we also like to look at a slightly larger area, just because from our perspective, markets don't necessarily operate within municipal boundaries, so they tend to fluctuate within a broader area. So for this project, we took a look at Barrington and also Barrington in the context of basically all of the adjacent communities that are directly around it or maybe one community away. So that's generally the area. So when we look at the submarket for some of the comparison graphics, that's the area that we're talking about. So we always like to start out by talking about a community's growth, if there is growth. We work a lot across communities in New England, from very urban places to very rural places, and growth is not always a given in the places that we work. But good news for Barrington, the population has been growing over the last 10 or 15 years. As of at least the 2023 census numbers, Barrington's population is about 9,400, and that represents a growth up about 5% from 2014, so over about a 10-year period, about a 5% growth. So that's great news when you're thinking about future demand for a town center when it comes to things like housing, but also, as we'll get into later, when it comes to things like new households that bring added spending power, especially local spending power to support the businesses that are here today in Barrington, as well as the ones that we're trying to attract to a revitalized town center. The other interesting thing that we noticed, we start to look at population in a little bit more specificity. We also looked about, we like to look at population by age to see how the town might be changing over time. So these different colored lines correspond to different years of the census, 2000, 2010, 2020, and the lines go across an age spectrum from zero years all the way on the left to 100 plus all the way on the right. And what we see is that line essentially stays relatively steady for those who are under the age of 18. You can see there's a pretty big cluster there, and then they start to spread out quite a bit as you get toward older adult ages, 65 plus. What this says to us is there's sort of a steady number of children and sort of families who have children, but the population's also aging as you see that orange line pushing further and further to the right as the census years go from 2000 to 2020. Not, you know, this is very similar to many communities across New England where we have an aging population that tends to age in place. But as we're thinking about who might come to a future town center, we have younger children, we have families today, and then we have older folks who might be looking to downsize from a home, a larger home that they might have today, and might fit perfectly into a revitalized town center, our new town center that has smaller units, whether that be townhouses, condos, it could be multifamily rentals, or a mix of all those things.
I thought it was really interesting, this additional peak that developed in the kind of like young family age group, like parent age group, that's different than the other, you know, decades for the census. And it certainly feels like that's what's happening in Barrington. It seems like Barrington is attracting a lot of families, and that's, you know, impacting the culture and trajectory a little bit, but you can see that in the demographics.
Yep, exactly.
Here, just unmute yourselves to the outside here.
I think the second, there's that little peak of initial people coming in, but the second dip stood out as a much more telling trend for me, because if you look, it's a pretty significant age shift. It's about a 15-year age shift, and it's a 15-year age shift into a demographic that is much more in line with older children, not younger children.
Yep, agreed.
Kind of dichotomy there. Thanks, Connor. Great.
This is just a similar graphic around the age distribution, but we just compared it to that submarket area, the county as a whole, and then the state as a whole across these different age groupings. And I think what we just heard from Member Knapp and also from Connor sort of plays out here as we compare it to larger geographies where we do see a much higher percentage of the population under 18. And then we also see higher percentages for those who are sort of 45 and into 55. But then we get to the 65 plus, you're pretty much in line with the county in the submarket, but then we know New Hampshire, along with a lot of other northern New England states, do have a larger aging population. So we do see that in New Hampshire. Next. So as we start to think about, let's say, housing demand in particular, because that is becoming a more and more important component of town centers, not only around New England, but around the country in the work that we do, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about households, owner and renter households, income, and then housing demand before we get to some of the commercial aspects. So right now, Barrington is about, it actually has a pretty high number of, I would say, smaller household sizes. So you see those bars that are going upward for the one- and two-person households, particularly for owner households. There's a lot of one- and two-person owner households here in Barrington. I think that probably correlates with a lot of the older adult households that we saw before in the shift in age. And then as we start to get into the larger households, three, four, and four-person, you can see those bars starting to come down. So the vast majority of households, both owner and renter, are sort of three-person and under. What we see in some communities, particularly with an older population that tend to be in those owner-occupied households, is they're staying there. Now, they may be staying there because they want to, but in some cases, they may be staying there because there's nowhere else for them to go if they did want to downsize, which then constrains that owner-occupied housing stock for individuals or families who are trying to move into Barrington. So we're like stuck in this cycle right now in New England where it's too expensive for people to move out to something else, but there's also not something for them to move into. So everybody's just kind of staying put where they are. So opening up some additional housing options in a town center could be a good way to potentially start to allow people, to give them more options to move in and out of the market. And this just really quickly illustrates this by family and non-family households, the household size, and how that's changed. So family households would be two or more people related by blood or marriage. So that could be married couples or married couples with children. Non-family households are either single-person households or two or more people that are not related. So that could be unmarried couples or it could be just a roommate situation. And what we see here is, under the family households, we see that growth in two-person households, but we also see a decline in some of the larger households, the three- and four-person, but then the five-person households are going up, which is probably those families, those sort of families who have moved in or established families with multiple children. And then on the non-family, we see one-person households going up, two-person households coming down a little bit, and then everything else sort of staying steady. So again, I think this kind of backs up the demand for, you've got sort of demand for larger housing units with family households, and then some of that demand from one- and two-person households for smaller units. Just quickly, we also wanted to see, you know, what's kind of been happening in Barrington in terms of new construction or time periods of construction. Barrington's pretty interesting compared to a lot of New England communities that we work in. And a lot of, you know, these communities have been around for hundreds of years in many cases, and so is the housing stock in a lot of cases, particularly the owner-occupied housing stock. It was interesting to see in Barrington, so not a lot of renter housing units, but when it comes to the owner housing units, a lot of construction basically since the 80s and moving all the way into today. So kind of a newer, I would say, newer by New England standard, owner-occupied housing stock, which is kind of unique from a lot of communities that we see, or some much, much older housing stock. And that sort of continuing, we had asked the town to just provide us with some of the, we call it the project pipeline information, so developments that are either under construction, have been permitted or approved, or things that the town knows might be coming in the future. So there is a good pipeline of housing and a lot of different housing types that are coming or might be underway. So things from single-family homes to townhouses to even a couple of smaller mixed-use projects, let's say 20 or fewer units. So a good diversity of housing that's coming along in different types of projects. So good to see the market is active. People are still investing here. People are still building here. But we know, just looking at Barrington compared to its nearest neighbors in the submarket, Barrington's sort of in the middle there with that bar. The sort of reddish color shows the number of renter units each community versus the green bar, which is owner. So you can kind of see, not surprisingly, in some of the larger communities like a Dover or Rochester, you know, a pretty good split of owner to renter. But when we come down to Barrington, you can see just how small that red, sort of that red bar is compared to the green. But it's not unlike other communities nearby, like Lee or Milton or Stratford, sort of similar makeup. But if we are thinking about a town center, you know, is there a mix of housing units that might make sense down there that might be attractive to the private sector when it comes to the town center area? And the other interesting thing, too, is sort of comparing Barrington from a household income perspective to its nearest neighbors. Amazingly, even a median household income of just shy of $100,000, Barrington does kind of fall in the middle of the submarket communities, even though that number is quite high, and it has been growing over the last 10 years. So as we think about things like housing affordability, we have folks who are moving in with more money. We know since the pandemic, and we'll go over this, housing prices have gone up quite a bit, requiring higher incomes to move into communities in New England. But from a sort of positive aspect of rising incomes, it does bring more spending power to those households, as I mentioned before. So if we're thinking about local business support and bringing more spending power to Barrington, we do like to see, as do developers or business owners, like to see those incomes going up over time. Just a little bit about the housing stock, probably not surprising, especially to Planning Board members, the vast majority of owner-occupied units are kind of in structures that are either single-family detached in nature, or they might be duplexes or attached dwellings that have four, basically two to four units. And you can see, when we look at renter units, a much smaller percentage of the pie, but some diversity in the units. There are some renter rental, single-family units, some in two to four, some in five to 19, but not nearly as many renter units as we have owner units. So now we start to come into pricing and demand a little bit. I had to sort of go back and double-check this figure a couple times, because you can see this vacancy number is pulled from the census. So at the time the census is taken, they have a question that's, you know, where they're looking, is your unit vacant? Or is it occupied? Is it for sale? Is it for rent? And they capture that. In Barrington, as of the 2023 five-year census, you can see sort of what's happened year over year. So owner-occupied vacancy was hovering around 5% back in 2011. Fast forward only a few years later, that's come down to near zero. There is a little bit of margin of error there, but, you know, whether it's 1%, 2%, or zero, it's still extremely low. And that is, that means there's no movement in the market. People aren't really, you know, everybody's moving out and putting their house on the market. It's going like that. You can see for rental units, it's basically at zero. I'm sure there's some movement in the market, but given that you don't have that many rental units, and there's high demand for rental units all over, seeing a vacancy rate of next to nothing is not terribly surprising. But this is really low. Usually for rental markets, a healthy vacancy is in like the 5% to 8% range. That means people are sort of moving in and out, and there's units to be had in the market. For owner-occupied, I would say 5%, 3% to 5% might be typical, especially right now, meaning houses are coming on the market, but they're coming back off. It's pretty tight here. There's not a whole lot of market activity. And this just looks at vacancy a different way. So the census breaks down vacancy into about seven different categories. I thought it was just interesting to see, really, the only vacancy that's been reported by the census dating back to about 2017 is vacant seasonal. They classify seasonal housing, so units that are lived in for less than six months at a time. That could be a second home. It could be a, like an Airbnb or something like that. That's basically what's being reported as vacant. There's almost nothing being reported as for rent, for sale, sale pending, or rent pending, sort of backing up the chart that we looked at on the previous slide. Okay, so a little bit just going into sort of labor and economy. Residents, so first we look at, of all the residents who have a job in Barrington, so they live in Barrington and they're working, what employment sectors are they employed in? Just to get a sense of, you know, where are they traveling for work? What are they doing for work? How much might they be making in order to afford to live in Barrington? So we see most residents who live in Barrington that are working are employed in healthcare or education sectors, followed by manufacturing, sort of retail trade, and then it sort of goes down from there, professional scientific and technical services, finance and insurance, public administration, and so on. But where most of the growth has been, which is pretty interesting, has been in residents who are living here and are employed in manufacturing. You can see the red bar is larger than the green bar. Same with retail trade. And then as we work our way down the list, other smaller sectors like construction, transportation, warehousing, entertainment. So these are the primary job sectors that people are employed in. But when we look at the total number of jobs in Barrington, regardless of where someone lives, but if they're working in Barrington, we again see manufacturing is one of the top employment sectors here, followed by government. So that could be the school system or local town government or other government functions, whether it be state-related or other, retail trade, construction, and it goes down the list. And, but we also wanted to look at, what are the top five employment growth sectors over the last 10 years? Again, sort of reflecting what's above, manufacturing, construction, accommodation, and food services, that's sort of restaurants and hotels, administrative and support services, your typical office jobs. One of the reasons that we wanted to look at this, too, is sort of looking at what the average earnings are for different folks who are working in Barrington, and whether or not at those earnings could they even afford to live here. And we have more information in the full report about that, just in terms of job pay and affordability. Okay, so just to wrap up on the residential side, just in terms of what's going on with pricing and availability. So probably not surprising, if you've looked at the housing market, or if you own a home and have looked at what it might be worth these days, post-2020, housing prices everywhere went pretty crazy. We compared Barrington to the county here, just using sales data going back to 2015, and you can see that green line for Barrington going up quite sharply. And even over the last couple of years, basically back to 2022, going up very sharply. The sort of median, single-family sales price in 2024 was about 500, almost $550,000. And that's up from just a handful of years ago, like less than 10 years ago, of under $300,000. So over a very short period of time, houses went crazy, which is why I think you also see incomes going up, because if housing prices go up $200,000 over five or six years, you've got to be earning a lot more in order to be able to afford basically that same house, not to mention the new stuff that's being brought to the market. That's probably one and a half or two times what a typical house, you know, would go for that's been around for 30 or 40 years in the market. Sort of corresponding with the housing side of things, and we have some more information about this in the report, we're also trying to figure out, well, what does the state say Barrington's projected population might be? They have projections that go out to the year 2050. And basically, over the next 15 to 20 years or so, the state is saying Barrington could add, if sort of trajectories continue as they have in the past, because you have been experiencing that 5% growth over the last 10 years. If we sort of compounded that, that could be another 1,200 residents over that time period. If we took a typical average house size in Barrington of about 2.7 persons per household, we essentially just divide the population change by 2.7 persons per household. That could be a potential need to accommodate that population growth of almost 500 additional households or housing units. So again, if you are looking at a town center where housing is going to be a component of the town center, I would see this as a positive sign that Barrington has been a growing community, and the state is projecting it to be a growing community. So that means additional household demand in the future. So if we're thinking about that sort of development of the town center, I think housing is a positive aspect there.
That's a good question. How do you see going forward the stock of housing changing in reaction to all the other development that's going around us in Dover and Rochester? Do you see that impacting sort of the age that we might get here? Schooling? I don't know what type of housing all that is, whether they're small places or large places or a mix.
Yep. So I'd say it would, you know, the housing and sort of what gets built will largely be driven by your regulatory environment. So if you're zoning, I'm not saying you're going to do this, but if you zoned everything for acre lots, you know, you're probably going to get a certain type of housing. But if you're thinking about a typical town center where you might want like vertical mixed use with housing over commercial, or maybe in the back of some of those parcels, there might be housing with commercial in the front if it's more horizontal mixed use, you know, that might lend itself more to smaller-sized units, whether it be smaller rentals, smaller condos, townhouses, which tend to be a smaller footprint and can only, and usually can accommodate, you know, smaller household sizes.
So why would people come to Barrington versus go to these other places that have more public transportation, more going on? You know, why would younger families come here?
Yeah, so I would say there could be a couple reasons. One could be just the diversity of the housing stock in the future. So if there are other options here that might, and I don't know every, all the surrounding communities as well as you all do, but if there's a more of a diversity here or the price points are different here, I'd also say, I'd say the quality of the community. I think Barrington's got a great reputation and is a great community to live in. So I think if you're a younger couple, or certainly if you have younger kids and you're looking at the quality of the community, safety, the school district, those kinds of things, that could be really attractive as well.
Just to add on that, one of the things that I've seen the marketplace that was really quiet for many years is townhouses. They weren't being built for years in our state, and I'd say the last five or six years, I've seen a real turnaround of townhouses. That missing middle has really come roaring back, where for years and years, even my hometown in Milford, just recently, we decided seeing townhouses being built again, and the last ones were built in the early 90s. So that's something that's a significant trend shift that I've seen in our state.
I think some of the question you're asking, too, we can't, I mean, we can't fully answer the question. It's a good question for us to kind of sit with as we go through this process, but as Connor mentioned, we talked with some of the developers that have been working pretty regularly in Barrington and have plans to work here in the future. And there's a combination of understanding who they would be trying to attract and what they think would actually be possible here in Barrington as part of your vision. possible here in Barrington as part of your vision. Changing the regulations and then kind of seeing, and the mix might really have to respond to whatever the market's not providing. You have more than this eventual town center to offer. You have all your open space. You have your trails, projects. Like there's a lot of reasons why people of various ages might choose to come here over Rochester or Dover.
One anecdotal piece of demographic data, which I thought was interesting that came at the select board meeting last night. So there's 43 apartment rental units that were recently constructed across the street from the middle school. And we're trying to get the Route 9 there designated as a school zone, which is why the topic came up. But the school reported, they've been tracking new development and families in the new development. Of those 43 units, there are eight families. And so it will be interesting to see the, the units that are built just up the road, kind of behind the Irving. Those will be condo units. They're starting to hit the market now, I think at around 450,000, something like that. And it will be interesting to track that similar demographic data, just from a school age families standpoint, because we have easy access to that, because the school tracks that data, to see what that, that type of housing stock brings for demographics, what it attracts for demographics.
I had thought the superintendent said that that number of families was middle school families. What's your sense?
That six were middle school, but that eight overall were enrolled in our school system.
Families.
Out of 45 units.
Forty-three, right.
Forty-three units. So they're all occupied.
Yes.
With eight kids.
That's three thousand a month.
That sounds right.
Yeah. And The planning board members might remember when, and I think it was, I don't think it was that project. I'm trying to remember the sequencing, but there was a, a, an apartment condo project. I don't think it was the 80 units. It might've been the dev development project. But there was discussion at the planning board level to try to anticipate what the demographics of the housing stock would be. And it was the, it was Rob Baldwin from Central Falls Realty. He brought a de-identified listing of his tenants in rental unit, similar rental unit complex in Dover. And the number of, of kids per unit was like a third of that of single family homes. I mean, and, and that's supported by other more comprehensive data. This is, you know, more anecdotal. But to your point about how housing stock affects the demographics and what demographics of people it attracts to Barrington, I think we're starting to be able to see some of those, just as it relates specifically to Barrington, with the, some of the housing units that have been built.
It'd be interesting to do a survey of them and ask, well, why did you come here?
Good point.
Cause I mean, if they're coming here for, you know, more woods and things, and then we're building up downtown, what does that do? It's almost a mismatch. I, I don't know.
Could be. That's a good point.
Back at it?
Yep. Okay, so we'll look a little bit at the specific market data. This is for multifamily. We'll show a couple of, there are a couple of versions of this chart that look similar. So I'll explain it here and then you'll sort of see it repeated. But this data comes from CoStar, which is a third-party source that we use where they are tracking market activity across a number of market sectors from multifamily residential to office, retail, industrial, hotel, et cetera. So within the submarket, so Barrington and its surrounding communities, CoStar is tracking vacancy, which is the orange line that you see sort of spiking up and down. And then it, and then it tracks net deliveries, which are the red bars going up. So those net deliveries are essentially when new multi, multifamily in this case is built. You'll see a red bar go up. If for some reason a property comes off the market, like this usually doesn't happen, but let's say something gets demolished, the red bar would go down. So we don't see any of those here. And then for absorption, that's effectively the bar, the green bars that are going up usually follow a red bar going up means, let's say a red bar comes up, there's 100 units that just get built on the market and now they're up for rent. Those green bars are how quickly those units rent up. So, and the vacancy essentially tracks with as red bars go up, vacancy is going up. Cause you're putting units on the market that are unoccupied, vacancy goes up. When the green bars start to go up, that means those are being leased up. So vacancy starts to come down. And what we try to look for is like, usually with absorption, that's kind of what we pay attention to in vacancy. So it's when something of significance is brought to this submarket, how quickly does it lease up? And does it have an impact on vacancy? Because across New England, and I'll say this is sort of a New England based trend. We don't, we're not really building to sort of keep up with demand really anywhere. Even when 100 or 200 or 400 units are brought to market almost anywhere, within three quarters, right? Quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, they're leased up. And your vacancy is coming right back down to where it was historically. In the case of the submarket, historically probably 2% to 3%. And you can see that trend, vacancy comes up, red bars come up, green bars follow for a couple of quarters and we're right back to where the vacancy is. So this is true, not just in Barrington, but even for the submarket, there's a lot of demand. And just, we just don't build enough. So for those 43 new households that just moved in, the answer might be either where else am I going to live, right? That could be the answer because vacancy is, yeah, there is nothing, vacancy is really tight. Prices are what they are because we have a supply and demand problem. That could be the reason, or it could be Barrington's an amazing community. I want to live here. I mean, it could be. It's going to be some combination of all those. So anyway, okay, next slide. So similar to what we saw with single family, the vacancy rate is, is quite low in Barrington. That's the green line on the left headed downward compared to the submarket, which recently went up because there was a big delivery of like 400 units in the submarket. That's why you see vacancy spiking in 2024, 2025. But in Barrington, because we haven't been building that much in terms of multifamily, a little bit here and there, it's stayed relatively flat. But pricing was, was pretty interesting to look at, sort of average market asking rent per unit. The submarket as of 2025 is about $2,000 a month on average. Barrington's pretty low at around maybe 1,100 or so. Obviously the new stuff that just got built, sounds like it's coming in a top of market. But this is averaging with everything else, and a lot of that is older stock that's been around for a while. Probably more sort of lowercase affordable than the brand new stuff that's renting for, you know, 25, 2,700 dollars a unit.
And I don't know if the condensed version has this slide, but in the full analysis, there's a, a listing of owner occupied and rental units based on housing type. And you'll see that the mobile home rental bar is, is pretty big. And so I think that probably drives that number down. We even see on the municipal welfare side, the rents increasing for, you know, traditional rental property, not a mobile home, has been dramatic in the last couple of years. And so I don't know, you know, I don't know how much of a lag there is in that data, you know, catching some of that. But some of the bigger rental properties down, especially on the Route 4 corridor, have recently sold. And the new owners are, you know, recouping some of their investment with increased rents and, you know, to match the market. And, and they're probably looking at similar numbers as this, that there's an opportunity there to bring the rental prices higher in Barrington.
And we have 110, 132 units assessed for under 350,000. 600 of them are mobile. But the other 600 are, you know, a couple of condos and regular homes, older stock.
Yep.
But a good percentage of town, it's like 33.
John, he just turned that towards you so Alex can hear you online.
Thirty-three point three percent of the town's stock, housing stock, not including rentals, is under 350,000.
That's assessed value equalized ratios about 85%. So yeah.
The 55 that just finished here are averaging around 850,000.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
Yep, so.
There's also something else.
Two different worlds.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah.
There's something else interesting that I've been pondering lately, and that is what's happening in Boston. So if you take away all the international students, you take away a lot of the graduate schools, students. You take away even some of the pharma, because some of the big pharmas in, in Boston are actually doing mRNA type vaccines. And that's being phased out by the government. I would think that that would lower vacancy rates in Boston. And that might draw people for, that might come here back to Boston. Do you all have any thoughts about this? Has there ever been any study on that?
You mean increased vacancy in the Boston area?
Yeah. So I mean, it, we're, we're sort of tied to what Boston does, maybe more in the southern part of the state. But I, I wonder, because it seems like there could be a dramatic shift in Boston and that might affect us.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there could be, I think it's so early to, to sort of tell what the impacts will be. I, I'm not aware of any study like that. I mean, it'd be interesting. Not something that's part of this, but it'd be interesting to see like what the actual migration patterns have been like, like to and from Barrington. And like where people are working versus where they're living more broadly. We do have some of that, I think in the full report. But there is data out there that shows like for people who live in Barrington, but might work in Boston. Like we could pull the percentages of those. My gut tells me it's probably fairly low as a percentage. So I don't think it'll have a huge impact here.
I, I could see what would happen is that the communities that are along the border with Massachusetts often work down in Boston, probably better paying jobs.
Right.
And so as those prices go down, because people are moving elsewhere, they're losing their jobs. Then that would have compounding effects. So it may not be direct. It could be indirect.
It could. Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of demand to live in this city. So I, yeah, I don't know.
I don't.
There was, so back in 2021, 2022, we did see a large influx of people coming out of Boston into this area because they wanted to get away from the big cities with COVID and everything like that.
And they could work remotely.
They could work remotely. Now we're seeing a lot of people coming back into work. So there is a large, not a large group, there's some people moving back into the Boston area, but more what you're seeing people moving out of New England is they're getting priced out and they're going down south.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what we're seeing more of. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, return to work is driving a big portion of, of that with folks who commute. Or folks who move to more rural communities for that way of life, but they could work remotely. But now they're not able to work remote, being they have to be in the office three days a week. That seems to be about the norm that I'm seeing in the industry is three days a week is kind of the standard return to work guideline. And then there, most companies are moving to a two-day-a-week remote cycle if they keep.
I, I think it's safe to say it's difficult to study the impact of both federal policy, the economic market, and certainly the impact post pandemic. I don't know that Barrington will really ever be able to study that in a way that would be impactful for our planning purposes.
What's really stood out with the charts that you folks have presented? And that when I had looked at them coming through was that Barrington as a whole tends to be a more elevated community than the communities around us. Or in Stratford County, we tend to be higher. And it, but if I followed that curve, it, it tends to parallel it pretty well. Which to me is usually a good sign. It means we're maintaining our trend or maybe even growing that trend a little bit, but we're not seeing a wild shift off of that trend line.
No, I would agree.
These developments just finished 30%, of from out of state.
Really?
Yep.
Wow.
Yep, from 14 different states too. Only one from Massachusetts. They're from everywhere, from Colorado to Kentucky.
It's the no income tax, no sales tax. It's driving a lot of people here.
Yes.
I thought there'd be more Massachusetts people with the millionaires tax too, you know? They haven't, but at least not here.
They all went to their houses on Winnipeg.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, we have a planning board chair that does all of his own deed research. It's, it's a fantastic asset to compliment our professional staff.
That's a trivia.
Yeah.
To, just to kind of quickly finish up with, with office and retail. So I think to other sectors that you'd probably want to consider for a town center area. So first we just looked at employment. So essentially employment projections from 2024 to 2034, using a source that we use called Lightcast. They do 10-year projections by employment sector. So Barrington, again, a little bit of growth, about a 1% growth overall. Most sectors either staying flat or, or growing a little bit. And it sort of mirrors again with Stratford County, about a 1% growth in Stratford County. So again, sort of what we were just talking about, sort of holding the trend. If you go to the next slide, what we try to do is try to figure out what future space demand might be based on employment changes. So what we do is we take a look at office using sectors by employment. We look at what the, what the 10-year projection for employment is. And we essentially multiply those, that new number of employees by a, by essentially a square foot per employee metric for office, like 200 to 250 square feet is kind of a typical metric. So for Barrington, because there's not a ton of increased employment from office users, it's mostly in the sort of healthcare sector, but even that's relatively small. The sort of annualized demand's like 300 square feet or 3,200 square feet over 10 years. So pretty nominal. But even for the whole, the sort of county as a whole, it's like 16,000 square feet per year over 10 years.
We do not need a tremendous amount of office.
Yeah, but what I, but what I would say, yeah, I would say you don't need an office headquarters, certainly. But in your zoning, I don't think there would be any reason to not allow like first floor office, smaller sized professional offices that could be an attorney or a dentist or a doctor, you know, something like that, that I think would fit nicely into a town center and kind of complement the sort of retail restaurant aspects of a traditional town center. So even though I'm not showing a ton of demand, if a developer felt like there was a market or they had a tenant in mind and they were going to build, build a tenant-based space already, I don't think you would want to do anything in your zoning to preclude that from happening. But I don't want to go out there saying, yeah, there's 50,000 square feet of office demand. So go, go forth with that, just to be realistic. Okay. And this sort of backs it up from the submarket standpoint. This chart looks a little crazy because the Liberty Mutual vacated about 600,000 square feet, moved to Portsmouth. That's why you see that massive green bar dropping down in 2025 and the vacancy skyrocketing. But vacancy, even with all the fluctuations post pandemic, in the submarkets have been around 2% to 3%, so pretty low. But you can see not very, very, very few net deliveries, which are the red bars going up. They're really, really small. So like a couple thousand square feet here and there in the whole submarket. So not a lot of demand, not a lot of being built. But again, from a regulatory standpoint, probably something I imagine you'd want to have in your use table.
That 600,000 square feet is going to be 500 apartments by pretty soon.
Yeah. There you go.
Which again, as you know, the great point you brought up earlier, Scott, these, paying attention to the submarket is really important to understand the trends and what is likely to attract the, the type of development, not just residential, but commercial in Barrington. When we see something like that, a project like that happening, you know, 10 minutes, you know, seven minutes from the border of Barrington realistically, so.
Rents, just quickly, you know, are, are sort of been flat the last couple of years, but are trending up, which is good. Same in the submarket. And then just a couple of examples, we have these in the reports, just of things being built in the last couple of years. We found a couple of examples of sort of smaller scale office space, you know, sort of around 10,000 square feet or less that have been built in surrounding communities, Dover, Rawlingsford, for example. So nice things that could potentially fit into a town center concept, either as a standalone building or even as a mixed-use building. And then the last piece is just on retail. So similar graphic from CoStar that we see here, just comparing vacancy, net deliveries and net absorption. So generally, again, similar to what we saw with the other ones, vacancy fluctuates as properties are coming on and off the market. But typically vacancy has been hovering in that sort of three and a half to 4%, which is pretty typical in most communities that we see. You can go to the next one. Rents have been headed upward from about $12 a square foot 10 years ago to where they are now at about $15 or $16 a square foot, which is good news. Rents are going up. Okay, so now on to the demand piece. So what, what we do, we use a software card called Enveronics. And we can tell it to pick a point. So I essentially picked the sort of midpoint intersection of Route 9 and, and 125 to sort of represent the town center location, even though I know it's going to be a little bigger than that. And we can look at, we typically look at radii, so one mile, three mile and five mile radius from that point. And Veronics gives us all of the household spending of households within that radius that exist. So how much do those households spend across different retail and food categories? Versus how many businesses are there and their sales volume within that radius? If there is more household spending than there is sales volume, that says to us, people are still spending that money. They're just not spending it within the one mile or the three mile or the five mile. That spending is going outward, which means if you added some retail where that spending is headed outwards and, and a business could capture that spending, it could then help support new retail. Or it could help support fill vacancies in your community. I don't think you really have a lot of those, but in other communities that we work in, there's vacancy. Or it could signal to an existing retailer, hey, there might be an opportunity for me to expand my merchandise line or maybe make my space a little bit bigger if there's a way for me to capture some of that spending. So that's the way that we look at it. So within the one mile, what you'll notice is those red bars sort of are, are my. what you'll notice is those red bars sort of are, are my translation of recapturing. If we could recapture twenty five percent of the spending that's leaving the one mile and we could keep it here, it could support that much in terms of square footage across those different retail and restaurant categories. The reason those numbers are a bit high, um, for a one mile is there's a lot of spending that's leaving because you have households there with higher household income. So there's a lot of, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of spending power, but there's not a lot of businesses within this one mile. So they're having to go to Rochester and Dover and Durham and Portsmouth and, you know, all the surrounding communities that have those retail, um, spaces for them to spend. I don't really usually like to look at the one mile, I think it's too tight and it's too, and it's too close. So I would recommend that we look at the next slide, which is the three mile. Three mile essentially captures pretty much all of Barrington and we're starting to get into some of the surrounding communities. So if we were trying to think about, well, within Barrington, what could we potentially recapture from Barrington households? And their spending, I think this number would be more of your locally driven recapture rate from current households. Um, which I think when it comes to food services and sort of the dining and drinking places, as well as food and beverage stores, those are kind of your two biggest categories. Um, I think both of those fit nicely into a town center, particularly restaurants, coffee shops, a wine bar, like those kinds of things that might go nicely on a first floor of a mixed use or a commercial building. And then for food and beverage stores, that might be something like a wine shop or it could be like a niche food retailer. So maybe a meat market or a cheese shop or something that's smaller, a small food co-op. It wouldn't be a grocery store because those are like fifty to sixty thousand square feet in size. And we're saying your recapture is like around six thousand square feet, give or take. So again, trying to find things that could fit nicely into a smaller town center, um, that don't necessarily need to drive the traffic of a Hanaford or a Star Market or a Stop and Shop or something of that size or market basket.
Just, I want to stay on this one for just one second. This is, I think this is one of the more impactful conclusions from the work that's been done. Those two bars that, uh, represent the most demand for square foot of development, um, based on the spending power align almost perfectly with multiple surveys that we've done in the community from a qualitative perspective, saying this is what our community is lacking for development. And so that's a really positive thing to see. And again, as we take this information and go and talk to the people looking to invest in our community, to be able to tell them, not only does a market analysis say that there's opportunity to bring a successful business in these sectors to Barrington, but we're also hearing it from our residents who are going to be the ones to come out. I mean, just look at the excitement in the community for the, the, um, Jackie's Restaurant, the former Frank Jones Restaurant. You know, that excitement and energy is born not only from the fact that there's market support for it, but also the survey says that. The other thing, and this came in conversation when we were reviewing an early draft of this, I think if my memory serves me, that fifteen percent recapture is relatively conservative. I think the, what the consultant team recognized is the markets of Rochester and Dover, especially to some extent Durham, maybe, they, there's, there are things that exist in those markets that we're not going to replace in Barrington and bring, keep that spending power in Barrington. And so settling on a smaller recapture rate of fifteen percent and still being able to come to the conclusion that there's opportunities for investment that the market can support is, I think, a really positive thing for being able to achieve that town center. The reason, just to land the plane, the reason I think that this is one of the more impactful results is because, and I remember Ron, we talked about it a lot early on, and even Scott was a part of some of those conversations, where it just didn't feel like we, it didn't feel like the community could support the vision of a town center with these shops and restaurants and, and, you know, having that. And so having some data to say that there is some support for that, I think is positive as we look at our regulations and how the town center might turn up.
I mean, I, I'm still skeptical, Connor, because to me, um, you know, we talk about restaurants. We have, we have, you know, cozies, we have, we have the place, we have Italian, we got Chinese, we got Vietnam. We have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of food options here. I don't think we're, we're short of those. But I think of the money I spend locally that you think it can recapture, I spend most of it down in the, the Market Basket Plaza. You know, and you're not going to bring that to town center. That's where I buy, you know, that's where I get my, uh, that's my drugstore, that's my food. There's a, uh, state liquor store there. I mean, you're not bringing that to the town center.
No, no, and I don't, I don't think that's part of the vision. I don't think a, a, a commercial component like that, I don't think is part of the vision. Sorry, I mean to cut you off, Andy.
No, that's fine. I, I was just gonna say, a lot of the conversation we had and even that we had with developers was that we have data that says, yes, people want that. But we don't have developers that have a desire to build it because their ROI is not high enough on it to make it worth their while. They would prefer to stay completely away from it. And almost all of them that have come in have made that very clear to the board.
And I, I think that since I've been on the board, we've had a number of mixed use development projects in the town center. None of them have generated a commercial activity, as far as I know. They all used to get the density to do residential and the, and the commercial space just a throwaway.
Which ones you have in mind?
To fruition.
The ones on nine, the, well, Dubb never happened, Dubb development was us getting, but the one, the Crossman Cemetery and the one further up, they basically came in and says, there's no market for this. And, you know, they downsized the commercial space to the absolute minimum. They're going to be residential developments. I mean, there's going to be no commercial spaces at all. So I, I have never seen a mixed use development project that generated any commercial space in my whole time that I can think of that I've been on the board.
The mixed use building here, John O'Neill said, fi- under five hundred square feet, there's no market for it and nobody's interested.
Yeah, so I continue to be skeptical. I mean, I think the mixed use, I can continue to be, where I can, we're on Beauty Hill. I can turn left and come to town center, or I can go right, I go to Lee, Lee Chalk Circle and get all my stuff there. I'm going to continue to turn right. You know, you're going to have a hard time getting me to come down to town center. When you get a market basket that has, you know, great variety and great prices, I'm going to come down for, you know, I'm not an organic, you know, uh, food kind of guy. I'm not going to roll down here for some, you know, overpriced, uh, mini, uh.
I think those are some really important points. I, I think the, the, the only point that I think is, um, there's still an unknown, a large unknown about, is there really hasn't been the, the construction of any new commercial space in the town center. So I think that's still unproven. I know, you know, I know what we've heard from developers and, you know, the Paul Thibodeau's project with the six units, I think that's, you know, kind of a unique, um, a, a unique proposal or, you know, not a proposal anymore, but a unique solution for the, um, what he was trying to accomplish there. Uh, but I will say what, what, and like I said, we're going to get back with, uh, developers and the folks looking to invest here. But we're starting to hear different about the, uh, demand for commercial development. And because I've taken what John O'Neill said about, you know, the, I'm just building the commercial so I can get the residential and I'm going to have to basically undervalue the commercial to get it filled. The, I think that becomes a different dynamic here than it does in the town center. And what we're hearing from developers and and property owners kind of in that area is that that's starting to change a little bit. So we're going to circle back with them to get some specifics, but I think those are important points that we need to pay attention to that you made, Ron.
I think it's important to, a lot of, um, I know this, um, is a difficult topic sometimes to address, but it is often women that make the spending choices within households when it comes to retail, when it comes to food service. If any one of you men want to correct me, the last time you asked your wife to go out or your spouse to go out and have dinner, bet you she decided. I think some of what's being proposed here, the things such as the clothing and the smaller accessory stores are things that the population that would be making a lot of those spending choices would actually appreciate. I think that, um, we are most often the people who are buying the birthday gift for the family member. And if I'm being sexist, I apologize, but it's what I think happens. So I think it's easy to be skeptical, but when you look at this, it's giving us that base to jump from in making those economic futuristic viewpoints of where Barrington is going. I can definitely see restaurants being a huge thing, the smaller special, specialty stores being a really good idea. Um, I think having this study to say, would you consider? Is the way that we fuel that economic development in the middle. And yes, I apologize for my sexist perspective.
What she's saying is she gets fifty one percent of the vote in her house.
For six years.
Yeah.
I think it's seventy or eighty.
If we overlay some of the emerging, if we overlay some of the emerging data from the UNH, um, trails and economic, um, data. Um, they said people, uh, prefer unique businesses or restaurants or whatever. So they definitely weren't gonna, a chain was not going to attract them, um, but something local and unique.
Yeah, I, I think I just wanted to build on that. I mean, looking at the biggest category that you pointed out, kind of this food service dining place is a unique place that's going to draw people who want to spend time and meet up with other folks from the community. It's not as transactional as maybe grocery shopping or just going to a doctor's appointment. It becomes a place you walk down to the coffee shop or you stop by and have a beer after work. Um, but there's something going on, there's a sense that there's something going on. And it may be small, it may be a village scale, but there are some really good examples where people have done this. And maybe the market won't be ready this year or next year. I mean, you've been at it for almost twenty years. But if you had the regulations in place and you continue to have these conversations with developers, you have a better chance of getting something done than if you stick with the regulations that you have now, um, in creating something unique.
You're doing at least your part of that.
I think that's the challenge is you have the developers who don't want to do it. And the problem that we're going to encounter is by time the need is actually really there, you haven't built the space for it. You have to work them simultaneously so that, you, you know, kind of like the field of dreams, if you build it, they will come. You've got to, you've got to go at it with that mindset so that you're prepared and ready when it actually comes to fruition.
And again, this data is based on existing households. You know, what we heard back in two thousand and seven was we need to lower, we need to increase the density, lower the square foot per unit for development in the town center and village in order to support the town center vision. That's what we heard. We need people so that we have buying power so that we can have this town center. What this data shows is there are enough people in this three mile radius to support, you know, what we're doing here. I think the point Andy made is really salient in that it might take the, um, type of development, similar to the regulations we have now, to, uh, allow some residential development, to incentivize developers to come and invest in the commercial component. Eric mentioned earlier this idea of, um, vertical mixed use versus horizontal mixed use. One of the big things that the developers have told us is that to achieve that look and feel of the town center that they're looking for, they almost prefer the ability to do some horizontal mixed use and consolidate the commercial component with a, a detached residential component, where they have the same opportunity to make the investment, where they're looking for that ROI, they're getting that immediate residential anchor to their development. But they're investing in order to secure that density, they're investing in the commercial structures, which are maybe horizontally mixed use, and so we have that look and feel a little bit different, which I, you know, not to tease where we're headed, but I think those are the topics we want to explore as we're looking at what our regulations offer now versus what they could look like to attract what we really want, um, with the, the, the changes that residents might need to approve. I didn't mean to, to, to track the conversation so close to the end, there'll be more discussion, but I did want to stop on that slide. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, no, good. Um, so this one's just a five mile, so exact same analysis, but we lower the recapture rate to ten percent, uh, in our experience, like people have more choices as you get further from the part, you know, where you're measuring. So when we get out to five miles, we try to make a really conservative, uh, recapture rate. Um, so similar analysis, um, and if you were successful in that, you know, that just brings in more spending. And I think the last. Yep, um, I'm not going to go into this just because I know we've been going for a while and Stephen Mark have, have things too. But, um, at Connor's, uh, request, we did a really quick look, um, at, for households in Barrington. Sort of how much do they typically spend across these different categories? And if we were to apply that spending across, um, sort of per square foot sales, how much could we support per sort of per hundred new households? So if you're thinking about new residential as part of the town center, like at what density do you start to get enough spending power to start to support square footage? So just like in broad strokes, you know, about a hundred households might be able to support sixteen hundred square feet of, of new retail space. So I know that number seems small, but that's effectively like one storefront or one small coffee shop, like fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet. So just to kind of put that in perspective as you're thinking about regulations and.
And that one's important because again, the people are here to support, you know, ten thousand plus square feet of different industries. We don't necessarily need another hundred households to, to meet that demand. It's only going to increase to sixteen hundred square feet.
And this slide just bring, essentially brings together everything that we talked about. So I think residential, four fifty to five hundred, new residences across, across town, some of that could locate in the town center. From office perspective, I'd say less than five thousand square feet would be likely, at least in the near term. And then as we talked about for retail and restaurants, if we took kind of that three to five mile radius, it could be, you know, a couple of retail storefronts, maybe four or five, and then maybe, you know, four or five restaurants at the most, because those tend to be a little bit larger. So that's it.
Have you considered what amenities Barrington Common might have that property has to attract other types of businesses? Are there something that would make it more, something people would want to come to more?
So the Barrington Common would be the space that the town purchased?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think it would be really interesting, I assume it's going to be publicly owned. But if there was an opportunity to do like a public private partnership with, you know, some kind of food or drink related business where that open space could spill out into like format space, outdoor space, outdoor seating, uh, pro, some kind of programmatic space that could be a draw for the business. So you're purchasing something, you're going to the common and doing something or listening to something or seeing something. Like, I think that would be great. I mean, most town centers in New England do have that classic central common, you know, that sort of was built up before probably that most of the buildings were. So I think having that space and envisioning around a space is great.
And those are the exact conversations that we're having. And so we hope to be able to bring some of those ideas to fruition, uh, now that we have that opportunity with the space. Other specific questions on the market analysis?
Um, just, you know, just a question. I mean, I continue to be skeptical that we can drive commercial space downtown. But we had a application a while ago for senior housing, and that seemed to me to be a, a pretty good fit for downtown. Why wouldn't we focus on that rather than, I think that's got a real, you, number one, it can drive commercial. But number two, it, you know, it, it generates revenue with no kids in school, which is always good for taxes, which everybody cares about. So that seemed to me to be a good fit for downtown, smaller, smaller properties, higher density. Why wouldn't that be at least in a more appropriate or a parallel path?
There's a, there's a spectrum of, of this topic. And on one end of the spectrum is the facilities, and I'll let Tracy, Tracy make her point, um, now, and then I'll address the other points. But on, on the facility end of the spectrum, what we have to look out for is.
So, um, just background, I have a master's in public policy and a master's in, um, healthcare management. If that was to be built and the model was a nonprofit model, we would not be bringing in any taxation under that nonprofit. When you see institutions like that in communities, there is a very fast increase in the amount of usage for paramedic and ambulance. In today's world, we're finding that the paramedic EMT ambulances are actually beginning to replace what used to be families in social service with our elderly population. My point in bringing that up is there's no guarantee that if you were to build skilled healthcare in the middle of downtown Barrington, that it would bring the town the economic benefit you're projecting. The other side to it is that most of the families that would be utilizing something like that are not necessarily Barringtonites, they would potentially be coming from other areas. And the third thing to mention is for, there's a fourth thing after this. But the third thing is that it is very difficult right now to find doctors and nurses, not, um, a growing number to meet the needs of the aging population throughout the region. And, um, the fourth part to that was that we don't get to license the number of beds. This community would never be able to do that. It is done at the state level. You can approve the number of rooms that you put in. And say you wanted to build a, a fifty room assisted living facility that segues into a nursing home. Should the state decide that you could fit four patients in that room, you then would have two hundred patients. Our water supply. Our water supply, septic systems could not meet the demand of something like the bleaching agents that have to take place within a healthcare facility.
So on one end of the spectrum, but there's other opportunities in that spectrum. What we heard about the aging population in Barrington and the variety of housing stock, something that, some conversations that I've had with developers is looking for an opportunity to do a multifamily style building for senior housing that, you know, is almost like the, the picture, like the condos, but with integrated elevators and other amenities specific to that age group so that it's a unique, it's a unique housing stock opportunity in the town center where we have some of, some amenities that don't exist throughout the rest of Barrington. You know, in some quadrants of the town center, you are talking about walkability to the library and, and other things like that. So I think along that spectrum, there's, there's good ideas there that we should explore from a regulatory standpoint and how do we incentivize and encourage that type of development, which would be low impact from a school age population standpoint, but would also bring in, in, you know, revenue from a property tax base standpoint without the same demand for services. So I think there's opportunity there.
I think Northwood just finished in over 55. They don't have a medical component.
No, correct.
It's just condominiums.
So on that spectrum, if we hang out over here, we might not have the third rails of nonprofit and no property taxes.
Right, I was just going to basically comment on that, that you would have to stay in the 55-plus target without going into the assisted living. And, and the problem with an elevator is when you start looking at the cost of an elevator for a building, it's $100,000 for an elevator. Right. So if you want to put in an elevator, you've got to recoup that cost somewhere in it, which means they want density to make up that cost. And it, and it becomes a significant added challenge or cost prohibitor, inhibitor to the building.
I didn't see that in the study. The consumer isn't based on age.
Yeah.
I think when you think of our.
Be, I think it would be important that we're thinking of how do we help our aging population stay in the community that they've spent their entire lives in. And there's ways to do that. I had done a study where you built 62 and older housing and the people of the community were able to buy their units. There's a nurse that stays on site 24 hours a day. Your residents can sell their homes, move to these units, where they retain the value of the unit, like a condo unit, but with that nursing care on site so that when they're ready for skilled care. And nobody designs this model, by the way, even though it's the best thing for our aging population. And the reason it doesn't get designed, there's no money to be made in it. The money is retained by the actual person that's aging so that when they need more skilled care in a nursing home, they have the money to pay for it.
Well, I think they did that down in Exeter with, like Maplewood, is that the name of it? Riverwoods. They, but they also have the transitional care to assisted living. But they, they did it, they did a campus where you can buy in, you live there, you age to a point where you can't, and then you sell your unit and move into the assisted living.
If we wanted to do what is right by Barringtonites, that is the model.
Other market analysis wise, other thoughts or questions? The next step would be finalizing this document, moving into future phases.
Just one factor that I didn't hear considered, which I think is important. Back in the days before I retired and I worked, a lot of the stuff that, you know, restaurants, things like that, the Chitalk Services, I did those close to where I worked, not to where I lived. So you have TurboCam here, which is, I don't think we'd have anywhere near the restaurants we have now. It was for TurboCam. So we have a pretty good concentration of people who utilize services, you know, right downtown. And I, I think that concentration, if, you know, if I was putting houses in equivalence, would be a pretty big number. You know, obviously, probably the majority of people, you know, bring their lunch to work. But, you know, throughout the week, every once in a while, you want to go out and get something from a local restaurant. So that's a factor here that I, you know, one of the reasons I continue to be skeptical. We have what we have here, I think, and I think TurboCam's a big part of it.
Also the traffic on 125 especially, but Route 9. There's on slide 33 of the full report, the draft report that you have, there's two maps. Slide 33 is the people that live outside of Barrington and where they work inside of Barrington. So it's kind of like a heat map and sort of addresses kind of that point. So that, that was a component of the, of the work that was done.
Well, and I think it needs to, you know, if you look at context, you know, we're not, as noted, he's not suggesting, you know, 200,000 square feet space there, talking under 20. So I think as part of this mixed use district, there should be a reality that it's not going to be big, but it has to be integrated either with empty space to allow it when it's available, when it, so it can, when the market's there, it's, it can be built, or it's on the first floor and hopefully the tenant's available. But, I mean, we're talking 5,000, 6,000, it's not a lot of space because just there is, the demand's not there. We're not talking a 100,000 square foot with Market Basket as a, as a great anchor.
And I don't think we want that. I mean, raise your hand if you want that, we have those. And so that's, we're in a good spot to be able to have a small scale, like opportunity for residents to gather kind of thing. So, but, but that's why it's important that we're all here, right? Because as we progress from here and to start talking about the regulations and the case studies, we need to bring the healthiest dose of skepticism, skepticism, excuse me, to what any adjustments to the vision for the town center are. Because if, if we don't consider where this could go wrong or just stall out like it did back in 2007 when the town center regulations first went into place, then all this works for nothing. You know, we need to be, we can't be an echo chamber of, you know, rah rah, this town center vision doesn't, we don't need to change a thing. We're just going to keep crossing our fingers and hope something happens and, and we'll all be, you know, just so happy when it does. And then it doesn't and we're just all looking around each other. So I think that, yeah, that, that needs to be part of the conversation the whole way through.
I mean, I agree. I think that it's generated nothing so far. So what are we doing different that's going to change the trajectory? You know, how is it going to change? You know?
That's the next phase.
That's the question.
That's the next phase. What are we going to do different?
It hasn't worked so far, so tell me where it's going to work now. I mean, that's really where I'm.
And I'm just hearing them talk about these are going to be all small shops. And that right there is, was telling me it's going to fail because it's going to be big enough to draw people to the shop. So if you're going to have a, a unique apparel store.
Right.
If you don't have enough variety, but you can drive 15 minutes to TJ Maxx, that's where you're going to go. So looking at, we've already got a small meat market. We've already got a cheese store. We've already got a Christmas dove who's on the border going out. We, so how many of these? I mean, the dove's already closed their other four stores and they're hanging on by a thread, which is why they're selling them. So the question remains, how much of these little niche stores are we going to be able to support?
I think it's a great question. I think, when I think about the creating a village from scratch, like you're trying to do, and I look at just a few of the case studies we've looked at so far, you know, a lot of them built on successful downtowns or successful villages, or they had some kind of anchor there. And I think a lot of what we talked about tonight needs to reflect the principles of what makes a place great, like what makes a place. It's more than the one store. So if I'm going to go with my wife who wants to look in the apparel store, maybe I can go grab a cup of coffee. There's something for both of us while we're there. And without that, it's going to just be, continue to be these isolated places. There's no sense to walk back and forth or go to the library. So I think when we meet with developers, when we meet with the public and we bring the 2007 plan back up and we give them a snapshot, because they're not going to want to go to the level of depth you guys are willing to go, a snapshot of what's out there. We then have the opportunity to create regulations, whether it be around the common property, whether it be there and behind the Christmas dove or next to the Christmas dove. You could create it in a couple of locations and then see what the market will bring forward. I mean, no one's going to come and build it if they don't think that it's going to work. But if you create this opportunity and if we could get people to give feedback about what they like to look and feel of and could explain how that kind of horizon, horizontal mixed use works and why they might see some of the housing in the back happen first before they see some of the shops up front happen. And that we're talking about a relatively small area. It provides some opportunity for some creativity. And I think it might get one of these developers or maybe a new developer to see an opportunity like Barrington's ready, the conditions are right, we've been having conversations and we're going to approach the town about doing something by the common or we're going to go work with this housing developer. Does that line up with what you guys think?
I think it's easy for us to. Look, look at what has come in to the communities adjacent to us. You call it the submarket. They've opened an additional wine and beer store right next to the sub shop in Aroma Joe's and Lee. They've. I don't know, I don't shop there. But they've opened a new holistic medicine just over the border in Rochester where there used to be a, what is the place you go when you hawk your goods for money?
Poncho.
Poncho, sorry. Never, I, yeah, I walked in one once to help a client out. I think that if we were to analyze what was happening, we've lost our brewery in town when Cozy's closed and people are, you know, we've got Backhill Brewery right over in Gonneck that people go to. I, I think we're losing opportunity. I know that small families in this town are driving to Kittery, Maine for indoor kids play spaces and paying to use those spaces. So I, I think we need to pay attention to this and, and think about that economic driver as we're planning what's going there. And I think there is opportunity. I think that it's, it's available.
I was going to say, I was going to say, because a lot of this has been focused on food, right? More fast casual places. We have restaurants, I live right next to Nipple Lake Golf Course, and despite the remodel, it's empty. So I don't know that it's more sit-down restaurants as much as it's more fast casual. Does that make sense? You know what I mean? Like, we don't have a lot of that here.
Sure.
Even Milos or Cozy's or something like that, you're talking 20 minutes, half hour for a pizza. You know what I mean? Andy came in with Burger King, something, you know, like, I, I know, I know we don't, I know we don't want more chains per se, but something like that that you can grab, go and, and keep, keep on your way. You know what I mean? Like, I could see more of that.
I thought Burger King was better than the transfer station.
Because Nipple Lake is very busy on Sunday nights.
On the weekends.
Because they have music. So that's the draw. And they get to seeing people every Sunday night.
I guess maybe we're talking maybe the wrong people. Maybe we need to have more conversations with people who own businesses, maybe surrounding members of chamber conferences to see what they think as opposed to just talking to developers.
And that has been part of it. So when we, when we, I think it's time to circle back, kind of once we have some information with the downtowns and trails program in this effort. But when we started the Barrington Common approach and the tax segment financing district to support that, that process started with meeting with all the business owners in the area and adjacent to the common and hearing about their needs. The Barrington Center Development Committee has been going out and connecting with the business owners. So Garth and Jim went out to, to connect with the business owners with the surveys for the downtowns and trails program. So they're definitely along for the ride. We're not hearing as strong of a voice or of, you know, this is what we need or this is what we don't have. But some of those conversations have facilitated advanced discussions about opportunities for additional investment and growth, you know, especially with the Barrington Common property and otherwise. So it is fruitful, but, you know, still.
Well, let's, let's say we talk to some of these people that have a number of different restaurants. If we go beyond just Barrington and ask them, what would make them want to build something near us? Why would they consider, why wouldn't they consider? Maybe we get more sort of business perspective beyond just Barrington where, which is what I really think we need.
It's a good point.
The other thing I wanted to throw in the mix, and I don't, did you send out our notes, Mark and I had, just on the reg review, the one pager?
The one that you said in internal agenda only?
No, that was just the agenda. I was trying to be respectful of the pay for planning purposes as we progressed.
The answer to your question is no.
That's fine. I'll give you, I'll give you the short version. I can always trust Connor. It would have just bored you. It was, that wasn't exciting internal stuff. But Mark and I had looked at the regs and talked with Eric and talked with Connor before Ernie was here. And so it would be good to talk with you, Ernie. But, you know, we just looked at the regulations within the town center and kind of your point, like, why hasn't anything happened? And in a lot of cases, the regulations are kind of in the way. Like, only 25% can be residential. For a plan you did develop, when you have to have at least 10 acres. Like, there are a lot of things that make this have to be kind of a big splash and a lot of commercial and a little bit of residential. You do have some, there are some shining lights in there, like multiple primary structures on a single lot. But then like buffering requirements and other things kind of get in the way of some of what you might want to talk about.
25% residential, I, I don't do this one in our regulations.
Yes, in the town center.
In the town center.
Yep, only 25% of the land area can be standalone residential. And then the density requirements are of that 25%.
Right.
Yep.
So it just seemed like they're not really serving you well. Like, let's try to figure out what it is you think you want or what you would allow to be built. And then let's craft regulations for those areas that would allow that and make it as easy so that if you do attract that developer who understands your vision, they don't then have to like jump through hoops and try to challenge your zoning all the way. They have a clear path. So that's part of this project too. It's covered by some of the funds that you've allocated.
Well, that, on residential is to drive commercial, which it hasn't happened, is my point.
Right.
So we have things that are geared to driving commercial and it still doesn't happen.
Right.
And it greets the, so that we've, we've done the mixed use to drive the commercial as a ground floor level with targeting residential above it, which has been, any of the projects that have come in have been at, at that level. And if you're trying to really drive a, a true downtown kind of New England feel, that's really what you want is you want, you almost want a mix of storefronts and rent some residential into it, but they're all within one or two units apart from each other so that you don't have large pockets of residential and then no commercial there. But that, that is going to create, that creates all kinds of other challenges as well.
Such as?
Such as, then you get into noise complaints, ordinances, things that start to impact what a, a mixed use town center would look or feel like. So where, which is why driving it upstairs creates an established feel of what you're going to have. You know what you're expecting with that. Because anybody that moves in up above a shop is either going to expect it to be quiet at 5:00 or if they know that there's a restaurant or a shop there, they're going to expect people sitting out, having a drink, swatting the flies, things like that in the evening time.
And so we'll, we'll dig into this horizontal versus vertical mixed use and, and what look and feel that has with the case studies and such. Being respectful of time, what, what do we want to tee up before we, unfortunately have to step away for another meeting at 7:30? So I probably won't be here through to the end. But where do we want to take it from here, Steve?
I mean, I think the biggest, sorry. I think the biggest thing is to figure out next steps for engagement. So going back out to the developers, we met with them in December. So it's been six months. It seems like bringing them back in and bringing them up to speed and giving them a chance to think about it the way you all are in your board roles. And then probably thinking with the planning board and the select board, how do we want to bring this forward to the public? What's the right timing for that? Is this a summertime event or are we better off waiting until September, which makes us closer to that March timeline? But like, how do we bring it to the public and, and let them know it's coming and let them engage in person? And we can also have some online alternatives. We have lots of potential tools in that toolbox. But it seems like those are next steps.
Concurrents from the group? Great. And so as far as the engagement and the timing of that, and, and certainly Ernie and I and staff can, you know, tee up what we think is most appropriate. But having, having an opportunity to either take a preliminary idea to the public and then develop it from there, or, you know, if we wait until September, having more of a fully cooked plan and, and go and just get some tweaks ahead of what might be zoning proposals. So I don't think there's a, there's one perfect way to do it. I think we could approach it from either end. And so we'll, we'll look at that and other opportunities to coincide with other public events happening, like the concert series or like the truck show or the work that we're doing with downtowns and trails, which will have an outreach component probably sooner than this. So I think there might be multiple opportunities to kind of check in with the public and then some focus centrally. So stay tuned for that.
I, I think it wouldn't be bad, I know you're going to leave. I think it wouldn't be bad if, after this meeting, if we circle back with, with Ernie and Connor and think about how those two could happen in parallel and then come back to you with updates as we go. Because I think coming to the public is something that they can see a little bit of data so we can create kind of a synopsis that people can look at and think about. And then put some alternatives out there for them to think about. Would you be okay with a small non-residential development in this area? Do you realize the regulations would need to change? So, just start to include them in the conversation. And it may not be as big and bold as in 2007.
It, it's kind of off-kilter, but, um, fits within what we're talking about. And Scott really alluded to it with what does it take to bring business into the community? And from the standpoint of how, like, I can speak from owning a small business. It is, um, it, it's got to be affordable for a small business to be able to come in and occupy a space. And if you look at businesses that start up, 90% of them fail within the first five years. So, they've got to be able to get over that hump and sustain fast enough and long enough to have an established footing to make it. Otherwise, you, you, you go through the churn, you end up with revolving space, and that's, that's not good for a downtown, and it's not good for what we're trying to accomplish. And it also isn't good for a developer, because they don't want, they don't want that. And, and it, it drives down the value of that space for them. They want to have a long, established client in there. So, breaking that barrier, that hurdle is, is a huge challenge. I don't know what the answer is to do it. Like, that's the hard part, I think.
Yeah. I kind of agree. I'm sorry, Scott.
No, go ahead.
I kind of agree with, you know, the feedback we've been getting from developers is, is, it doesn't happen. So, I think your next step to talk to developers, you know, you tell me, I mean, I'm, I'm a bad, wrong demographic, because I'm a, I'm a guy, you know, not very fashion-oriented, but, you know, when I buy clothes you're talking about, 90% of my clothes are, you know, Macy's.com or Amazon, you know, so I'm not going to a store unless it's, you know, TJ Maxx or Marshalls or something like that. So, a big place I can wander around, so with a good price. So, you know, everything I've seen somewhere in the planning board says it ain't going to happen. So, the developers have the best, you know, they have the pulse on the market. If they think, if, if that feedback comes back, yes, we can make it happen, and here's what needs to change. That'd be very important for me, because otherwise, I'm going to continue to say you guys are crazy.
So, yeah, yeah. So, like, in the real estate industry, what we're seeing right now for commercial space a lot is, uh, office spaces are very hard to be rented, because a lot of people are going remote. We talked about that earlier, so that people need less space. Uh, more people are shopping online through e-commerce, so you're seeing less brick-and-mortar clothing stores. So, the majority of the development we're typically seeing with, uh, commercial real estate is food and entertainment. Like I said, I, I, it seems like restaurant-wise, we might be good, because they do seem, I mean, weekends, they're busy, but during the week, kind of slower, but maybe more entertainment, which kind of brings you back to what you're talking about before, about recreation, things like that. So, it might be more towards those lines. You know what I mean?
Do you use your TIF funding to incentivize it? Does, I, I know, but if you look at, if you look at what you're trying to drive, the point of a TIF district is to help build that out. And that's really how you do it. You take your TIF funding and you use it to incentivize what you're trying to accomplish in that zone, and then build, you, you offset that cost for the developer to build it that way.
Of course, a fair amount of our TIF money is designated to pay off.
I got a whole lot to say about it, but shut up.
Wouldn't we appreciate that, Andy?
You've all, like, both you and Joyce have more than gotten an earful from me on it. I've put in the nickel and then some.
Now, you're going to say this was a great idea.
I hope, I hope everybody lives long enough to hear that.
Okay. No, this was, I think, super helpful and gives us at least direction to go in. I appreciate that you've come on forward, Ernie, because I know that Raymond had a very large budget overall. So, that economic development background will be helpful as well. Thank you for your.
Thank you all.
We have a lot of data in this.
Can you ask our question? All right, thank you, everybody.
Great, thank you.
Sean, is there anything else, or we, uh, do you need a motion to adjourn? I will make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, make that motion to adjourn, the next vote will be July 1st.
Planning board, that hurts, motion in seconds.
I'll second that motion. Call of the.
Yes, Shepard, aye.
Capella, aye.
Captain, aye.
Especially right.